Updates that we have planned for later in our agenda. Our agenda is fairly brief this evening. There's not a ton of committee updates, so the first part of the meeting should go fairly quick. And then the back half of our meeting, we do have a number of anticipated items for executive session that we'll talk about when we get there. So the first items up are our routine business items. You will see here a couple of minutes to accept. So first, the regular board meeting on November 9th. In addition, the committee of special education minutes for the multiple dates listed, as well as the committee on preschool special education minutes. So if there are no questions or comments on those, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So much.
Thank you, Amanda, second.
Second.
Thank you, Crystal, all those in favor.
Fine.
All right, great, that will carry. And that's all we have for routine business items.
You're on now.
Dan, I would open it up to any public comments this evening? No? Okay. I don't have anything from my presence report tonight. It's really just our committee updates. The first committee that we have here is personnel. So as you guys know, personnel is done by consent. Matt McCann isn't able to be here this evening. There's, you know, a number of items here on personnel. A fairly light agenda, as you would expect this time of year. I think it's important to call out, we've got a number of retirements. I saw a great story posted on social media today on Mr. Dupree with 55 years of service for the district, which is really impressive regardless of the industry that you're in. You know, when you hit 40 years, it's pretty impressive. I think he has 15 more than that, is really exceptional. So congratulations to him and his family on his well-deserved retirement. Also, Yolanda, the best year, I mean, I remember Yolanda when I was a student and the impact she had on students in the cafeteria and how much she was loved. So, you know, congratulations to all those folks who have announced their retirements and certainly wish them all the best. And then other than that, I'm not sure if there's a full lot here to call off to the group. Dan, is there anything you want to highlight to them?
Nope, the only piece I was gonna, if you didn't talk about Mr. Dupree, I was certainly going to. He wrote us a nice letter talking about how he lived his life and taught his children to give 100% of anything you can and work as long as you can and give as much as you can to other people. And I think that's a fantastic way to live your life and raise your children. So congrats to him and hopefully a very long, a long and fruitful retirement.
Well said. So does anybody have any questions on personnel? No? If not, then again, personnel is done by consent. So if there are no questions or objections, personnel on the floor. I'm gonna ask Mr. Ward to cover athletics agenda. Mr. Ballen's unable to either this evening, and I was not able to attend our most recent athletics update, so I'm gonna ask him to give us a brief overview.
Absolutely, so Mr. Carpenter, Mr. Palencia and I were at the last athletic committee meeting for the beginning part because we had invited the mayor to come in and speak about the Derby Park project as a follow-up to our previous meeting where we discussed negotiations about an inter-ministerial agreement with the village to use those fields. So we did have a conversation about that where we entertained some questions from them about our use of the field, and they entertained questions from us at the end. I did put Jeff on the spot and just said, Jeff, you're the board representative here, just looking to see if it's okay to go forward and working on the inter-ministerial agreements with the village and representing the board through that committee. He did say yes. There's gonna be an update on that in executive session later on, and I'll have Kevin in there to do that. So that was the first item that we did because we had guests. Then we excused our guests and Mr. Palencia as well, and Ryan and I carried on with Mr. Ballen. It is, I do wanna say that Amanda was there. We were having some technical difficulties, so she got disconnected, but we did continue on. We've talked about the classification proposal from NISFA about moving to the six classifications, which could be advantageous for athletes in Hudson Falls. What it does is it takes the Class A now and it splits it in half, so it makes us a larger A school, and it takes the bigger As and moves them to double As. It likely will pass when it gets to NISFA. It's a couple of years out for implementation, and it has not passed yet. But we did talk about it, the committee had asked, how does that affect Hudson Falls? And it's different, you could be different classes for different sports because they take into consideration how many teams across the state are in specific sports, and then they cut it up from there. So I just wanted to make sure I'm clear with anybody listening. That doesn't mean that we'll be in the same classification for every single sport, which is sometimes, always confusing for people to understand that, including me. And I spent a lot of time working through it. The other item of note, we just talked about mergers. This time of year, you'll have students, not students, schools reach out who have students who want to participate in certain sports, and they don't have enough to make their own team. The most recent example is we were reached out to about a women's or a girls' ice hockey team. There is one, there's interest in having one locally. As you know, we're part of a five-team merger for boys' ice hockey right now. We are willing to be part of one for girls' ice hockey if there are girls that are wishing to play hockey. So more to come on that. Mr. Carpenter is looking to see who we have for young ladies who might be interested, and it'll be the same schools, Softland Falls, Glens Falls, Warrensburg, and I'm missing one in there, but the same group of schools trying to do that same type of merger for our young ladies. I think, based on what Mr. Carpenter was able to find out, we have one or two young ladies playing in the AYHA hockey right now, but they might be a couple of years younger than ninth grade, so wouldn't be able to fit that team at this point. But it's on our radar, and the sentiment that was given at the committee level was any opportunity we can bring to our kids, in any way that we can work with other school districts to bring opportunities to our kids and their kids, is something we want to continue to do. And I've heard that in this room a few times, so we said it again at that meeting.
Great.
And those are the highlights.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Dan on athletics? I'll just highlight and underscore your sentiments regarding the potential reclassification. And that's something this board has talked about, you know, significantly over time, maybe predate Dan. I mean, we even actually went as far as to reach out to New York State Public High School Athletics Association and say, how do we petition you because we don't feel like we're classified for it in certain sports? So, you know, as Dan mentioned, we're one of the smallest Class A schools in the state in many sports. And if we were a B, then many of those sports would be, you know, a larger B but by 10 or 15 students, where right now we're, you know, smaller by hundreds at some instances when it starts to come into sectional classifications and things like that. So that would be a great enhancement, I think, on the state's part, and certainly would, in my opinion, you know, help to put our kids out of level play if they don't fit in many different sports. So great news that that's hopefully moving forward. Let's see, so if there's no other questions on athletics, next up is audit. Again, audit, we didn't meet this month, there was a light month, but Crystal, is there anything you wanna highlight before turning over to Kevin and me?
I don't think so. The only, just the treasurer's report, should I go through the treasurer's report?
Sure, you can go.
Okay. There actually, there's a couple things for extracurricular account balances as well. So for the treasurer's report, there was, in the general fund, we have a balance of 6.7 million and a total cash of 7.9. On the treasurer's report, on the warrants are in the board packet or on the onboard docs. And the extracurricular account balances, the class of 2020, we had had a balance remaining in that account for over a year, so we needed to move that into a different account. So that got transitioned into the senior high student council, so that's kind of, that was in there. In general athletics, there's some receipts in there from admission ticket sales, which is good news, and there's a full parking lot out there tonight, which is also good to see, so kind of puts home that we're, you know, continuing to have participation at athletic events for spectators, so that's great news. And then just for the middle school student council, there was also a candy fundraiser that they are, that they were working on, and that's the significance there. So that was, and that was for our board. I think that's all, I guess that's all I have for it.
Okay. Dan or Kevin, anything you guys wanna add on from an audit perspective?
I think we covered everything.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. Any questions from the board on audit? No? Okay, we will need a motion to approve the treasurer's report, so if there's no further questions in conversation on our table.
So.
Thank you, Heidi, second? Second? Thank you, Tim, all those in favor?
I have.
Great, okay. And next up, we have transportation. You know, Brian's not here tonight either. You know, again, it's a pretty standard transportation report. It does look like we've, you know, had some additional buses passed from the DOT inspection rate, so our team continues to have a great success rate of over 98.5%, which is fantastic. You know, the trip report is there as well with dates and field trips as you would, I'm sorry, sports trips and a couple of field trips as you might imagine. There's a manpower update as well, able to hire three attendants, which is great news. And that pretty much covers transportation. There is a CTE shuttle run resolution. Dan, if you can just give this group, you know, what they need to know about the CTE shuttle run?
Yep, absolutely. So every year, our students are attending programs at the CT Center over Dix Avenue or down at Myers Center. Those students often go out to work sites, and so we have, the motion tonight is to approve them doing so and us taking on our part of the expense to do so. It happens every single year. So if they're going to environmental conservation, they're not doing that on the site over there all the time, they're gonna go out to a work site where they can cut trees and run equipment, all those types of things. So that's what it's about, getting them from, we take them over, they take them from there to the work sites and bring them back to there, and we bring them back to our school building. So that's, that's all that it means there.
Perfect, thank you, Dan. As you can see here from the contract, we're looking at roughly just over 2500 costs for this year in funding for our school. Any question on the CTE resolution?
I don't have a question on that, but I just wanna, I wanna, so just transportation. Looking back, I know this is a December meeting, but I just wanna go back and talk about November quickly. As you know, we had a couple of days where we had to go remote and a couple of days of parent transport. I wanna say and recognize that our transportation folks did a fantastic job in getting stuff and running it back down the road again with revised runs. I wanna make sure I say that publicly as much as I can because it was a ton of work by just a couple of people at the top of that transportation department to make that happen. Four days seems like a long time, but we're talking about rerouting a lot of young people. It's not a lot of time, especially with drivers changing. Every day we were having a couple more maybe be quarantined and a couple come back. It was a moving target, and they did a really nice job and got us up and running. And then I was very happy to go and say, now we're back to the regular runs again, and that's where we are. So kudos to them for a lot of work to keep it moving for us. And thanks to the parents who did the parent transport as well. I wanna put that out there because our attendance did not drop off over the parent transport. We had a slight dip in one building, but the rest of the buildings between the students who were here in person and logged on, our attendance stayed pretty even to the Tuesday prior, to the Tuesday we did parent transport. I just picked two days in time and compared them. So I just wanna thank everybody who made it happen for our kids throughout that little hiccup that we had with transportation.
Excellent, good call, Stan, I appreciate that. Anybody have any questions on transportation? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the CTE resolution as listed in your agenda. Thank you, Crystal. Amanda, all those in favor?
I have.
Great, that will carry as well. B&amp;G also did not meet this month, so I don't believe there's any update, but Mark or Dan, anything you guys wanna share with the group?
Yeah, just a brief update. We did get approval from State Ed on our mechanical portion of the project. We're waiting on state approval on the architectural portion of the project. So as soon as that comes in, Mr. Ward, Mr. Palencia and the team will get the bids out for construction as well as the clerk of works or the project manager, probably within a week after we receive that approval. And so, so far, we're pretty close to being on track as well.
Great. Anybody wanna add?
We're good, thank you.
Okay. Any questions on those around? No? Okay. Next up, we have policy. I'm gonna turn it over to Amanda Lansman for our policy update.
Policy committee did not meet either, however, there was no new business, which is why we didn't meet, but there are three policies here for second reads and approval tonight. One of them is 6160, which is professional employment and staff development. The second one is the social service docs policy, which is a new policy, but we saw it last month, so that's obviously a pro-approval. And then we have 1510, which is regular board meetings and rules.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on those policies? Again, they're unchanged from when we met last, but you've got, you know, two edits and one brand new policy. If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the policies as listed.
So.
Thank you, Heidi, second?
Second.
Thank you, Crystal, all those in favor? All right, great, that will carry as well. And last but not least, we have our advocacy update. Heidi, I'm not sure if you have anything you wanna report out or if you were gonna have...
Just a couple of quick things.
Okay.
So last month, we had the ASBA dinner, and Mike and Dan and Amanda and I all went. The topic was chronic truancy, and it was a great night. Mike's gonna report out on that later in the evening, so I will not steal his thunder. And in the meantime, it was supposed to be tomorrow, but I guess next week on Monday, several of us are gonna meet with Carrie Warner to talk about challenges that boards, our boards specifically, is facing during COVID. And I just wanted to let everybody know that Dan has been hard at work advocating for our school district, and just this month, he has met with the executive chamber ed team, the division of budget education team, the assembly programming council in Ways and Means, Georgia Ashuto?
Mm-hmm.
Call me. The committee director for the Senate Education Committee, Assemblyman Michael Benedetto, Assembly Education Committee Chair, and the Senate Council, Amanda Godkin, Goodkin, the Senate Finance Education Staff, Monica Salati and Dave Shulman. And so I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that even when school is in session and we're not in board bed meeting, we have advocacy happening a lot, and I'm just super pumped about it. And I think that's it for advocacy.
Okay, thank you, Heidi.
You bet.
Dan, are you covering, are you, who's covering the legislative priorities?
Yep, so the legislative priorities, Heidi alluded to last month. I said, can we wait till they finalize them, across the WISFBOC's? So you have them in your packets, and they, we have a smaller list than previous years, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One of the biggest reasons is that we've been very successful in getting a couple of things passed through our advocacy over the last few years for our district and all the surrounding districts. So we also thought that a smaller list this year, with everything that's going on with folks with COVID, would make more sense. It's a little more difficult the last few years with advocacy, it's all through Zoom, and anybody who's used to having in-person meetings, though that's how your life is going now anyways. But we used to spend several days down to Capitol, running up and down the stairs and back and forth between the buildings. But we are pushing these priorities as well as specific Hudson Falls ones when we meet. I do meet with many of those meetings, I'm with a group of people, just so people are aware of that. And I also met with Carrie Warner and Dan Steck that had on that list. There's a few more that I meet with this week. But the three are the building aid for small capital projects. For several years, we're trying to get that increased above $100,000. A $100,000 project doesn't do very much in any school district, much less a district this size, and those are capital outweigh that you could do each and every single year. We're trying to get that increased to $250,000 because that's more what it takes to do any kind of project that would have meaning to a school district, even if you just chose one building. $100,000 will replace a couple banks, lockers and a couple sets of doors, because when you do the soft costs off the top of planning and architecture, they're taking about, you know, 25% to a third of that money right off the top, so you're not getting a lot of work done. So we're trying to make it so we can have a little bit larger projects so that those soft costs go down percentage-wise. And the other piece we're having trouble with many schools are is that when these projects are so small, the labor industry is not interested in your project. It's not big enough to attract your attention. So that's the reasoning behind that. Increasing the cap on WISFBOC's aid for career and tech ed teachers, the cap has been $30,000 since 1990-something. The average salary of a CTE instructor is well over $60,000 now, so we're only receiving aid on 30,000. Our kids benefit greatly from CTE. We had a couple of young folks here last month, they're in CTE programs. So we're just asking the state to up that to a better portion of what the actual salary of those instructors is as far as what they'll aid back on. And lastly, whoops, missed it, sorry, school aid, we're always asking about school aid. They already came out and announced they're gonna fully fund school aid, but we're also making sure that they have minimums in there for all schools, because if they just run the formula, there's a lot of schools that will lose out. So we're asking for, save harmless for schools, just like they've had for many years. So you start with what you had last year, and you receive something on top of it rather than some schools going up and other schools going down, because we know nobody's costs are going down right now. So we'll keep talking about those. President Bishop and I will be at a virtual legislative breakfast here in the next month, which was successful last year, to have our legislators come and hear about these priorities from a group of us, as well as having some students talk about their challenges in school that might be related to things our legislators can help with. So we're asking for you to officially adopt those as the priorities and support them tonight, and I can send letters with Kelly's help along to our collective officials.
Absolutely, thank you for the good recap there. Anybody have any questions on those legislative priorities? No? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So much.
Thank you. Heidi, I think I heard a second by Crystal. All those in favor? All right, great, that will carry as well. We do have a couple of items on new business. The first one is Chromebook donation request, so I'm gonna turn it back over to Dan to walk us through that as well.
Yep, so it's a very, it's a very small group, and this is something that we've done before. So these are machines that have passed their usable life here with us at the school district. What Google does with the Chromebooks is after a period of time, they stop supporting that machine, so you can't get updates anymore. But it will work, and I know Zach is in the back, but it will work for the uses of the folks that we donate them to, and that's the senior citizens group, is that? That's the group on this one, I believe. And that's happened previously as well, so it's standard business for you folks to do that. And I did ask that question, I'm like, why are we, if it's still working, why are we giving it away? And I was aware of the lifespan, but this is what you guys do with them, other school districts donate them, or we just recycle them. So these will work for the senior citizens' use for a period of time, maybe a year. We're not required to support them in any way. We wipe them, and then they go down there, they use them as best they can for as long as they can.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. I think if memory serves me right, I think we've donated them to graduated seniors in the past too who would want to take them, take theirs with them as well that are in the same situation, so. Anybody have any questions, concerns about donating? And just for the group to know, I think we're talking about three Chromebooks.
Correct, it's three total.
Valued at $250. So hearing no questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the Chromebook donation request. Thank you, Amanda, second?
Second.
Thank you, Crystal, all those in favor?
I have.
Great, that will carry as well. And this, Dan, I'm sorry, do you want to do this now, or do you wanna do your superintendent's update first and then transition to the...
So let's do that, let's switch, let's do the superintendent's report first, and because the board should have, we're gonna have a brief executive session just about this MOA.
Sure.
And then come back down and vote on it, and then we'll have a longer executive session for the progress of tenure reports that we've got our admin cabinet here to provide tonight.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda here. We're gonna change the order, we'll do the superintendent's report next, as Dan has mentioned, and then we'll follow that with our discussion on the aides and assistants' new contract MOA. Thank you, Crystal, second? Thank you, Heidi, all those in favor? Great, okay, great. All right, so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dan for superintendent's update.
So I have a, I'm trying to keep it short, but my list kept getting longer, so I'm gonna run through a bold list for you. And many of the things you guys hear about in my weekly updates to you, but I do like to make sure that we're providing information publicly at our meetings as well. You heard a lot about advocacy, just wanna, I put that on my radar every time. It's huge, and it really makes a difference, and I learned that firsthand in my position just before coming here. So you're always gonna hear me say, we don't wanna lose sight of the advocacy point as a school board and as a school district, and certainly don't let me lose sight of it as a superintendent. So I'll put that out there and make it a shared responsibility. Heidi mentioned that our area school boards, and Mike is gonna talk more about that, and will interject as needed. Want to have in public that we are doing progress of tenure reports tonight, I've mentioned it a few times. Those are gonna occur in executive session because they have to do with the employment of specific individuals, and certainly wanna have those under the strictest confidence. We are gonna invite several people into executive session tonight, our admin cabinet. When they come in, they're also bound by the confidentiality of executive session, and they all know that. Security personnel training, wanted to have, to update the board and let you know that half of our security guards have received updated training, a seven-hour course provided by a company called Securitas. We had the second set scheduled for Sunday. Unfortunately, our presenter had a family emergency and had to go to New York City, so we had to cancel it, we'll reschedule it. And once that second one happens, that means everybody will then have updated training this school year, and that's gonna be our new schedule. Kevin and I have worked on that, and we've got a schedule that's gonna be recurring, so we all know what's going on with that training. Safety review, that's been on my to-do list, we pushed it up the to-do list due to events occurring in our country. We had Mickey Jones from Camp Region WISFBOC, she's our safety specialist that we contract with, along with Mr. Palencia and Dave McKeegan, do all the buildings. Was that last Friday or two Fridays ago? Two Fridays ago. I have received the report. I've looked at the report, I wanna have a conversation with Mrs. Jones about that first. I did speak with the building principals on admin cabinet today about it, I'll release it to them as well. Overall, came back with just a few recommendations, and they weren't severe security risk recommendations, but some low-level recommendations to make. So I wanted to let the board know and the public know that that has occurred, and we're moving forward, taking care of that ASAP. And lastly, on my bold list, just letting you know that, and I know you've heard this, Jim Dexter is retiring, he's our WISFBOC's district superintendent. I received a survey from the state of New York from Deputy Director James Baldwin, and you had a couple of options. Do you wanna keep your WISFBOC's of the same structure? Do you wanna talk about restructuring your WISFBOC's to be absorbed by other WISFBOC's? I will tell you that I responded to that by saying, we wish to have no changes made to our, the structure of our WISFBOC's. We have a fantastic group that works well together. I would hate to see anything different happen that would put Hudson Falls School District, any of our neighboring districts, out to a different WISFBOC's and lose those relationships and partnerships that we have. So I sent that back into them yesterday, so. That's, and that's what I have. I'm gonna turn it over to Mike and let him work through the information from the ASBA dinner on attendance.
Can't click, I'm gonna wander around back here if you're all right. So about a month ago, four of us attended Adaronic Area School Boards Association dinner and panel on attendance. It was hosted by, it was moderated by Nancy DiStefano, who's one of the assistant superintendents over at our WISFBOC's, and you can see our panelists there. Nice, well-rounded group of presenters getting, speaking about attendance from a number of different angles. So what I thought I'd do is I would go through each of theirs, so we all collaborated on our notes and talked about what we heard and saw. What I thought I would do is go through what each of those folks was saying, and then compare it to what we have. A nice opportunity for us to say out loud the things that we're doing, the things that we have, you know, somewhat in comparison to our neighbors. And I would ask, and I've already said it out loud, I would ask that Dan keep me from overselling what we do, because the tendency is to say, yes, we're doing all these great things. There's always work to do, but it's a nice opportunity to say we have some nice things happening. So the first thing was Kyle from Queensberry. Kyle Gannon is the superintendent at Queensberry. On the left, you can see the things he was talking about, and the right is my thoughts about Hudson Falls. So if you know Kyle, he's a coach at heart, a great guy and a great leader, but truly takes that, yes, we can do it, we got this philosophy to the end. So in following Dr. Huntley's footsteps, who brought them academically all the way up, he's really thinking about bringing them up in terms of intramurals and extracurriculars and engagement across the board. So he was talking about taking a measure of all of the extracurriculars and intramurals that their students are involved at the secondary level, and if somebody is not involved, finding out why and trying to make something in order to involve them. So they're focused on sixth grade and eighth grade to make sure that at those two very choke points in education, that they're keeping their kids involved and engaged and on track for graduation. The other thing they're doing, they have everything all on one campus, it's an opportunity they have that not a lot of people do. They're gonna parade all of their extras up and down the campus, all of their teams and all of their intramurals gonna go up and down the campus. And later on in May, they're talking about having a provider fair outdoors, is it out on the football field?
Mm-hmm.
Is it out on the football field? Right? With the idea that all of their providers, social services, health, medical, internal, external, would be there and it would be open for the area districts to come in, check out and talk to all of those folks. Did I capture what Kyle was saying? I'm going to tap on you guys if you're all right. So I was thinking about what we have here. We have added extras across the board, all the way down to the K Center. It's not that money, it's interesting. It's not that money is a challenge. Busing has been a challenge. COVID has been a challenge. Getting offerings out there has been a challenge. But we have those ready to go. I did grab the surveys from Queensberry. So if that's an op, thing we want to do, we have them available. We do have plans to send our athletes down to the lower buildings. Artists down to the lower buildings. Our science teachers and students down to the lower buildings in the same way that we send the choral leaders down to the other buildings. So that our younger kids are seeing what's possible at the older grades. And then lastly, we're not having a provider fair. But we are working on this wraparound services brochure, which would be given out to anybody who wants it, sent home in backpacks, mailed, all of that. But we have really, really great wraparound services in our town and in our school. There's actually a, if you go three or four clicks deep, you can find it on our website. I think it's buried. So we want to make it upfront. I also heard from a nurse practitioner who was talking about the anxiety, the isolation, all of these things we know that has come out of COVID. She was talking about the idea of isolation is, is a, increases anxiety. It increases the symptomatic, symptoms. And that some schools have been, in response to students with anxiety, giving them more limited schedules. What she says is maybe backwards, right? Because if isolation makes you anxious, why would you isolate the student even more? This one, if you look in the right side there, we knock this one out of the park. When I talk to our colleagues in other districts, we really knock our wraparound services out of the park. We have far more available for our students than our area schools. We have a transition room in the, in the primary school. We have Mrs. McLean, Mr. Bogman and Coach Scratch in the high school, who serve various lanes of students who need the extra help. We've had first discussions about OASIS, which is sort of like a transition room at the middle school. We have SEL programs from K through eight, formal programs, K through eight. We have behavioral specialists, K through 12. We have a psych in every building. We have a social worker in every building. We have school slash guidance counselors from the intermediate school on up. And we have clinical help in every one of our buildings at least one day a week. It's awesome. That's one to brag about for sure. Amy Seacor was there. She's more into PINS. This is one I struggled with and I could imagine our secondary principals are probably not along with this. PINS is almost a last resort. Over the last few years, it hasn't been super helpful. Only because of the number, the level of need of our community, but also the level of service they're able to provide. So the new version is now pre-PINS. And pre-PINS is integrated into the high school, fair enough?
Can you remind everyone what PINS means?
Yeah, sure. Persons in need of support service. Yeah. So, and that could be any age. I mean, typically it starts at the middle school or high school. But a student who is seven or eight can be PINSed, turn it into a verb. And it's really pre-legal involvement, right? We have a good relationship with the DA. We have a good relationship with alternative sentencing. PINS, formally PINS in Washington County is a little bit of a shrug, but pre-PINS is, has some potential. This is the chewiest one, the chunkiest one. Because it has to do with culture and purpose and relationships. It's not the easiest one to pin down and just say, yep, hire a social worker. Yep, have a provider fair. Because this is feelings and thoughts, bigger picture. You guys know this as you've grappled with mission, vision and values over the past year. So John Sippel, Dr. Sippel is from Cornell University. He's also from the Rural Schools Association. He's talking about really what gets your high schoolers there to school and through school, through high school, is relationships, purpose and purposeful mission. He talked a little bit about research he's done around, very small research he's done around. What would bring our kids in was personalized messaging, postcards, mentoring, family engagement. And if I have it right, the one that worked best was messaging. My thought would have been family engagement. My thought would have been home visits. We do a ton of home visits. Personalized messaging. Hey, where are you? We miss you. Come on in. I'm your alarm today. Come on in. So this is a chunkier one, right? The things you do for this one are a domino or two back, right? You have to set a mission before you can live a mission and then think about the things that fulfill that mission. You're on track for that one. I think about the things that connect our kids or sort of embody that, that mission, vision, values language we have. The Tiger Way for our younger kids, the idea of a freshman academy for our ninth graders. Our Tiger Community Connections Person Coordinator, terrible title. But the idea of bringing our school out into the community and our community out to the school in a social way, just so we are more connected with who we are and our general area. Trying to get a parent university up and running for parents who might not know the academic side of schools. And then when you think about relationships and purpose, purposeful mission, you think about high schoolers. Why do we want to be here? What is there that's offered for me? We're trying to find a way through the master schedule to make sure that there are a greater number of offerings for our kids, to keep them here, to keep them engaged. Dan, you want to jump in? Mrs. Zdravkovic, Mrs. Leinsen?
So I guess the first, we don't always pre-meet or meet after we go to these things. But there was a lot of great ideas shared. And we decided that night that we were going to meet and talk about it as a team here. Because I was trying to also get a grasp on exactly what we do have here at Hudson Falls and what we don't have here at Hudson Falls. And I don't know. So now I'm six months in. I'm getting to the point where folks don't want to hear that anymore. But I'm trying to make sure that I'm not reinventing the wheel or taking away something that's a great tradition in trying to move forward with some of these things. And we had a really strong conversation with all the things we have done. And I know Mike said money's not, money's not a concern. And that's because of the federal funds that were, that were pushed to us for exactly these things. They just want to be upfront, open about that very publicly, that the money is always, money's always a concern, right Kevin? But, but for these types of things, we have a pad of money that was given to just support these types of activities. And so we really wanted, we really want to do so. And we started out strong with a lot of extra offerings for our students across buildings. Teacher came with something that would engage kids. There was a review process and an application process. Mike would review it and it comes to me for the final sign-off. And the building principals had seen it before that. But we've added quite a few things for our students, trying to get as many engaged as we can. It's a very big lift for young people and even for adults. But we're worried about a young people now who was spent maybe 18 months at home on a couch or in their bed doing school. And we need to get them back here. We know that's what's best for them. But it's a heavy lift. And we heard that consistently from all the people who presented. So folks that are thinking about Hudson Falls, just know that, and I'm sure that we do know, it's not just here. It's a heavy lift everywhere. It's a heavy lift at Queensberry that Kyle talked about. When I talk with other colleagues at the other surrounding schools. And when you're on message boards, even nationwide, it is a heavy lift across the countryside. So I'm glad we are where we are. But I wanted to see what board members said about where we are. And, and we felt good about where we are. Not that we want to be, but we felt good that we're moving in the right direction. So I just wanted, I think I'm catching the sentiment of that, the meeting we had that day talking through everything.
Can I add something?
Yeah, absolutely.
So what I thought was really interesting was especially at the board level. We're always talking about, you know, our state report card. How are we doing academically? Where can we do better? What are things that we're doing well? And I really thought it was interesting. And it made also sense for me as a parent and what I see in my kids. There was a lot of talk about extracurricular stuff. Not just sports, but clubs and activities. And how, even though those are a short portion of the day, they might be the thing that drags a kid to school. And I've seen that with my two kids, with the beginning of some clubs in the middle school and in high school. And as a board member, that was kind of like a slap in the face, like, wake up! Because those, like, it could be the difference in the morning when a parent goes to wake up a kid and be like, oh, hey, today's, you know, board game club. And that might be the thing that gets a kid to school. And it was kind of a paradigm shift for me. And so I don't think I gave enough import to the things that we offer that aren't necessarily targeted at our academics. But that could improve our academics by creating a culture where kids want to be here extra. So that I just thought was meaningful.
Great point. Great point. I'm good. I just, yeah. Thanks, Mike. I appreciate it. And the only other thing that I wanted to mention under the superintendent's report is I had, I had the great fortune, because it will be a month from this, the next time we talk. It's a great fortune to go to the full dress rehearsal for the high school choral concert this morning. I spent about a half hour in there. And the kids sound great. That's what I want to say. But more important than that, boy, they're doing something they love to do. And I'm so glad that they're able to have that opportunity this year when they weren't able to have that opportunity last year. I know we don't have all of our concerts up and running. Incremental steps in the right direction is where we are. And publicly, I just wanted to make sure that I said, we do have to limit seating because it's going to be held in the auditorium. We did offer the possibility to the teachers and the students to hold, and the gymnasium where we wouldn't have to limit seating. They were just more concerned about the sound degradation and chose to be in a smaller venue because it's better for their sound. Because we'd love to be able to pack the place. We just can't. But I want people to know that, I will say it every time, when we're talking about athletics, I'm going to talk about the arts. But that was great today. And I look forward to having people here tomorrow night. I think it's two parents per performing artist. And that's what we have to do for now, but we're, the kids sound great. It's going to be fantastic. It's going to bring tears to your eyes. I really think that's the case.
Yeah. Crystal's got a question.
Dan, is that going to be streamed at all?
It is. It is going to be streamed. The link will get out on our website. So yeah, we have locked that down. You got it. That's all I had.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. Anybody have any additional questions? I just have one. So on this last slide, there's a bullet that says, working on attendance, you'd be K through 12 attendance campaign. What are some of the pieces of that or the levers that we're going to pull to, you know, improve our lot of attendance?
So that is just public information campaign, right? Importance of attendance, social backpack, why you should come. There's a, it's not here. There's a measure of incentives built in as well. So come and you get a lottery ticket. And every week your lottery tickets are pulled for something from a local business.
For presentee, presentee of the awards.
Yes.
Correct. Yeah. And so the messaging started, it's ongoing, right? But the messaging kickoff for this started last Friday with my, what's it called, Talking Tiger. It talked about the importance of being here. So you're going to see, that's kind of the direction we're going to go in. I think people are, they're probably COVID messaged out. Not that I won't have to do more COVID messaging at some point. But we're trying to turn towards, okay, we need your children here. And we really want them here. And we're trying to provide different ways, incentives to get them here. So you're going to start hearing some of that messaging. And it's been a great team working on that. Public relations team, including Aubrey Kamler from Cap Region BOCES. She's, we've been working on it for a while.
Okay, cool. And then just more of a comment. So I appreciate you guys putting this together. It sounds like it was, you know, time well spent. I think it'd be helpful for the board probably to start, whether you want to do it quarterly or whatever it might be, but to start getting some actual attendance metrics. We've gotten those in the past. I haven't really seen a whole lot this year. You know, and obviously there's probably going to be a dip this year given what's going on. But try to benchmark us against, you know, how we just, how we perform historically in the past. I think helps to evaluate programs because of both of your points. And I think we're always trying to add programming, right? We always want to, you know, not say no to kids and give them as many opportunities as possible. But, you know, I want to be able to say that we can judge the effectiveness of those programs as well.
Right. And so there's a metric right here we're not prepared to talk about, but we do, we are watching the metrics.
Yeah, I'm not expecting it tonight. But, you know, I think just whether you do that in either a public update or in your Friday notes, you know, getting those online.
Okay. I think we'll add it to the superintendent's report for next month.
Okay.
We'll do it that way.
Sounds good.
Awesome.
Okay, great. Any other questions or thoughts for Dan? No? Okay. Thank you. All right. So, let's see. So we're going to jump back. We're sitting on folks. So, so as I previewed before, we do have anticipated need for an update on collective bargaining negotiations with our Aids and Assistance New Contract MOA. So with that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. Once we are in executive session, we're going to have to ask you folks to dismiss for a minute. We'll have a quick conversation. We'll bring you back. We'll have a quick vote on the Aids and Assistance MOA. And there's going to be a need for an additional executive session, as Dan has mentioned, regarding personnel matters for our administrative team to update the board on teachers' progress towards tenure. And there would be no anticipated action after that. So you can stick around and come back for the vote on the MOA if you'd like to. Otherwise, that's really the only other business item that's going to be available for all of us. With that being said, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session to again discuss collective bargaining negotiations with our Aids and Assistance. Thank you, Amanda. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Crystal. All those in favor? All right. Great. Thank you. Right, great, thank you.